Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting for the Buxton Plumbing Board for Monday, May 12th, the order. First on the agenda is a Pledge of Allegiance. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for Henry Hess, RLAOOBO, Rap Industries, Subdivision Amendment Application for Three-Lot Subdivision, Karma Strive, MAP 9, Lot 27-1-2. Since Roger is a principal in this, he is going to reclusive himself and not participate in our decision. Okay. Chair, entertain a motion, open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Craig, a second by Scott, to open the public hearing. Discussion, all those in favor? Three, one abstaining and one absent. Okay. Scott, you want to start? Questions from the board? Excuse me, I'm sorry, the applicant. Would you just give us a brief synopsis of what's going on?
Sure, thank you. Well, I guess since last we spoke, I appreciate, since the site walk there, the board being able to work through some of the site walk comments at the last meeting and push this project to this point and work with us in that regard. The questions that have been raised by code enforcement since then have certainly been updated on the plans. I know we had some comments around the test pits. We managed to make sure all the test pits were on there and labeled that corresponded with the soil survey that was completed as well by Longview Partners. Additionally, that road name request form was filled out and sent in. One thing that we did observe too is we did hear some comment from the board at one of the meetings regarding the drainage at the end of the road in terms of how it kind of created a bit of an issue for access on that last final lot. We did put some consideration into that, and you'll see in that revised plan that was submitted that we actually did make the decision to relocate that to the south side of the Hammerhead there to allow a little bit better access to that remaining lot. It really did make a lot of sense and appreciate the feedback. Lastly, on there, oops, lost my plate in the notes there. Lastly, there was the comment regarding Note 9 that we had on the subdivision as kind of a backup for where the test pits were already on the plans. We did provide a reserve area for septic. We did receive some feedback from code enforcement regarding the language in terms of how we would word the note. I did actually revise that note and I did bring those plans revised to the meeting should the board decide to amend or accept the amended note provided by code enforcement there. But I guess that kind of gets you caught up to speed from the last time we spoke. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board this evening.
Okay, Scott.
Yes, thank you for updating. The test pits. Yeah, regarding Note 9, can you tell me what that says? I may be reading it different than what.
The intent in the note is that test pits that are located on site, should any of them be not feasible or too wet in some cases, as some of the lots do have more than one test pit on there, there is an additional reserve area for either expansion of septic or leach field. So that area, the note, what that note says is, should you develop a septic in the originally located test pit area, that you may vacate the non-buildable thousand-square-foot area as there's already a septic designed in a proper location.
So this is not what I packed?
No, these came in when?
Last week.
The board should each have updated plans also.
So you have this revised Lot 9?
Yeah, so it says it will be vacated, which means it will be discarded, therefore you don't need the thousand anymore.
Should a septic be developed on the site in the areas where the test pits already have been taken there, right? So again, we have multiple test pits on the site. Most of those test pits should be viable for septic. If we have a few questions on that, we did bring Jim Logan from Longview who can speak a little bit to the test pits there. It's certainly not meant to state that it's vacated ahead of any septic being designed and installed. The intent being that once septic is designed, installed, and the area is delineated for test pits, that you don't need that additional reserve area anymore.
Right, okay. I thought our standard was if it's below the 24 inches in each lot, that there needs to be a reserve.
For eventual expansion or replacement of the disposal area.
Section 13.5.8. Doesn't that say that? Because the water level is like 20-some inches below, right?
I am Jim Logan, and we did, I am with Longview Partners, and I am the soil scientist and site evaluator that provided the information. There may be some confusion about test pits that are wetter than others. As a soil scientist who needed to prepare a high-intensity soil survey, we needed to have test pits in wet locations as well as dry ones. Hence, every lot's going to have wetter versus drier. I believe we did have at least two suitable sites for each lot if they've been misdesignated well. That's, I can assure the board that there's at least two sites out there, but I also want to clarify that the main state plumbing code would allow a minor expansion of a certain amount on an existing system should there be an added use to any of these lots later on. And under replacement system standards, we can replace the original system in the exact same location as, we can put a replacement system in the exact same location as the original. That's allowable by the main plumbing code. So implicit, I understand in the ordinance is the need to have two passing sites, assumedly because it makes for a more comfortable lot? I'm not sure exactly why that's in the town's ordinance, because again, the main plumbing code would allow for the replacement anyway. I believe that's probably something that's outdated in the plumbing code, other than to say if it's less than two feet, we need two suitable sites, as though that makes for a healthier building lot. We could debate that all day long.
Right. Oh, I agree, and I mean, septic designs come a long way. We can do a lot more with less area.
No, my point is that the main plumbing code allows for the replacement in the exact same location. You could almost say every site shown could be the replacement location or the second suitable site. But that's the state of main plumbing code. I'm not interpreting your ordinance.
No, I understand. I understand what you're saying, and I'm looking at what our ordinance says, that's all that's, so I don't know how the rest of the board feels, how you want to deal with that. But then the other note was Note 6, I know we talked about it last time, I thought you were going to change this about the overhead, that the units were going to be serviced with underground utilities, not overhead.
Yeah, the individual lot, yeah, so they'd be coming down overhead. So the note itself, I believe after we had spoke last time, I think based on the fact that we kind of came to an agreement or an understanding there, we didn't revise the language there, as the road itself will have overhead utility on it.
Right. So it should say the lots will be served underground.
Individual lots served underground.
And I guess my last comment is, I know this used to be a field at one time, I mean, woods at one time, now it's essentially a rock field. Any thoughts of doing some planting?
As a part of.
Essentially, it's not, I guess it's not a field, but it is an open, big open area now with no, with no trees.
Right now, it's just the road and the amendment to the lots there. I mean, it's site plan. I imagine folks, when they develop, will actually come forward with landscape plan if they're developing each site to go along with their site development. But at this time, there's not landscaping proposed outside of, you know, stabilization, erosion control, seating mixes on the slopes, things like that.
Yeah, we just had another subdivision that went in on a field, and we had required trees, which granted, there, each homeowner will probably do something.
Yeah, but that was an open field.
Yeah.
I don't think you would qualify that as an open field.
I know, it's kind of like in between, like this area was all vegetation.
Right now, there's going to be some sufficient buffers around the site, just existing vegetation. And I will say, you know, it is a commercial subdivision there, so there's not really the same commercial-to-commercial division in terms of buffering and landscape between the sites. I guess I would ask, is there something the board's looking for or asking for at this time?
Well, I guess I, what did I not say? I mean, I think it should be something, some kind of planning thing, but we don't have a planting plan in our ordinance.
Okay, that was my question. Was it in the ordinance?
The ordinance does say, I mean, it says open fields.
Two points. This is a cutover piece of woods that still has a lot of vegetation on it, and I've been on it and all over it, and there's no erosion to speak of. So I'm not sure what your concern is, other than to get these guys to plant trees where it was a wooded site.
Yeah. Well, when there were open fields before, there used to be trees.
I mean, it was probably a pasture. If you look past, if you look past the point at which you started to move into the neighborhood, it was probably a pasture anyway, like most of Buxton. It wasn't a particularly great stand of trees there to begin with either. There was a commercial, there was a thinning that needed to get done. So I don't know, what do you expect, the people to just leave the trees and never cut them?
Well, people do select.
Maine is a tree-cutting state. We're still the most forested state in the country.
All right, let's get back on track. Thank you. Craig, any comments or questions for the applicant?
So I guess I'm okay the way you've got Note 9 written, other than I would urge making sure you leave enough room. If somebody buys a lot, they do a building five years down the road, they want to expand, now they don't have enough room to expand the septic. I'd urge you to make sure that there's enough room within that footprint to expand the septic, if need be.
If the board would like, we would just suggest a condition of approval, that we provide a plan back to you with two spots shown on every lot. If that would be comfortable condition of approval, we'll get that done before the signing of the final plan. Is that acceptable to you? Would that cover it, if we actually did what Scott wanted to see on the plan?
Yeah.
Okay. There's no objection to that.
Can you read that back to conditional approval, that there's going to be two depicted septic plans on each lot?
For law, and that'll hopefully take care of Craig's concern as well.
Can I clarify that, not septic plans, but passing test pits shown?
Not designs, just suitable.
Is there any straps?
Just suitable areas.
We will provide two suitable sites with acceptable.
I just want to get the wording correct for the.
One thousand square-foot boxes, aren't they, if I didn't catch it right?
Yes.
We can do that.
We'd still probably leave Note 9, though, in the case that, again, if you move into the site, you'd still have the area there. It's there reserved, but if you don't need it when you own the site.
Yeah. And then, I'm a little confused on one part. Was there actually a medium-intensity soil survey done on the first time?
The first time, I believe you guys had that high intensity done, as it were.
If there is a medium-intensity requirement in the town's ordinance, it's a pretty meaningless map. It's the county soil survey that anybody can get online, but the qualifier in the beginning of that document says it's not supposed to be used for site-specific information, i.e. a subdivision. Hence, we provide the high-intensity soil survey. That map that I produced improved and updated the Natural Resources Conservation Service mapping, the York County Soil Survey, that was already mapped for the area 20 or 30 years ago. Yes, that's it. And the difference between the medium intensity, that has a map scale that only allows you to, it allows you to map only an acre or, what is it, three acres of a dissimilar soil. You can go up to a three-acre size of something that is more limiting. In the high-intensity map, that goes down to an eighth of an acre. So the high intensity is supposed to way surpass anything that the board would have gained in knowledge, the engineers, the designers of the project, than the high-intensity map that we provided, with the soil narrative that went with it. This describes all the drainage classes and the amount of runoff you get from those soils. The idea was, that was provided in the beginning. Then because this other project came along, we actually took that original mapping and updated it for this project. So it's been updated twice, and both times were high-intensity mapping to the highest level that the soil scientist industry in Maine will map, okay? So I would like to think that would be in excess of anything you would have gained from the medium-intensity map.
You all set with that?
I am.
Remember, I was away when you originally had this?
Yes.
And I haven't caught up to it yet, so.
No, feel free to ask.
My apologies for being away.
No worries, it's a really complicated subject.
Oh, it is, it is. Okay. I don't think I had. Is there a performance bond on the road as well?
So, yeah, for that, the applicant's actually in process of the letter of credit from Partners Bank, who also had funded the first, the first construction of the road there. I'd just like that, you know, prior to they get under construction, of course, that that's need to be secured. Yeah.
We make that a condition of approval.
I think that'd be reasonable.
Patty, any questions from town staff?
I would just like to point out that the ordinance does require the planting of trees when there's, when a street traverses open fields. It's in Section 13.5. L. Point 1. B. It's, when the proposed subdivision street traverses open fields, the plans must include the planting of street trees, which we have required other people to do.
Will we call that an open field?
The question was, is the board just asking for things willy-nilly, or does the ordinance require it? So I'm pointing out the section of the ordinance for you guys to decide.
I don't think it falls in like a mode of an field, so I don't.
Honestly, I don't think so.
No.
That was all pretty well wooded.
Yeah.
There's still some decent.
Yep.
On Note 9, are you satisfied with the revisions that the applicant has provided? No.
Doesn't meet the intent of the ordinance.
What would you like to see on there? Your wording or theirs?
What the, it's not my wording, it's the ordinance.
Ordinance, right.
The wording intended or that would be on Note 9 is secondary areas shall be vacated should septics be developed in the primary available test pits.
Okay.
And all that stating is essentially, should you develop a septic.
Right.
In the primary location, that you, we can vacate the thousand-square-foot, non-developable, unbuildable space that's located on there that potentially could be used for.
Right, and you're going to provide us with two reserve areas on each lot?
Correct.
And I'm okay with that.
As a condition there.
Contraicture.
I know.
You're either having Note 9 or not having Note 9.
Oh, it's.
You're just saying is that you're going to provide two strips, but your Note 9 says, well, if we build on one, we're going to get rid of the other one.
I think the intent of the conversation so far has been that we'd provide two suitable sites, not necessarily thousand-square-foot reserve areas, but two suitable sites on each lot.
Then why don't you.
So then, if that's the case as a condition, then we would remove Note, you don't need it, to your point.
Why don't we do that and just strike Note 9 completely?
Not speaking out of turn.
Right. I have no issue with that.
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I'd be happy to remove that.
That's why I thought.
Okay, yeah. All right, so Note 9 will be removed from the plans. Okay, any additional comments from town staff? Any additional comments from board members?
Yes, sir.
Any butters like to speak? Anybody from the general public like to comment on this application? Okay. Chair, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for RAAAP Industries.
Second?
Yeah, I'm just not in agreement on the whole open field thing, but I'm outnumbered tonight, so.
Okay.
There is no trees there. You're looking at a place, the part of the whole planting open field is the aesthetics later on, but I'm one out of two, so we'll move on.
Well, we can also address that to each individual applicant that comes into us for design review anyway, because it's all in the business commercial zone anyway, correct?
It is.
So they would have to, each individual lot owner would have to provide us with a plan for the buildings, the architectural elements, and the landscaping plan? Okay? Okay? All right.
So I'll make a sign.
I have a motion by Craig, a second by Scott, to close the public hearing. Discussion, all those in favor would be three, one abstaining and one absent. Okay, is the board ready to move on to conditions of approval? What do we want to?
Jerry, I think we should vote to accept.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah. Okay. Does the board feel that we need a medium-intensity survey done per Section 13.3B2-I?
I do not, we have a.
I don't, I don't think so either.
We have a Class A high-intensity soil survey.
Which is more than sufficient. Scott?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the board waive the condition in Section 13.3B2-I that the developer must supply a copy of a medium-intensity soil survey.
Jerry?
Yes.
Since the board doesn't have the authority in this ordinance to waive things.
Okay.
Can you just say the high-intensity soil survey is accepted? Can you just say the high-intensity soil survey is acceptable to meet that standard?
Okay.
That's a much more policy.
Yeah.
Approved.
But it says here, the board shall vote whether it is required per section thirteen. So we cannot require it, correct?
Say that again.
Back page of your letter. May eighth. Number one.
You can say that the high-intensity soil survey meets that standard. It's a, it's a more.
Okay.
Detailed study. I don't know why. You should vote, but.
Yep, in lieu of the fact of thirteen-three B-dash-two regarding a medium intensity, intensity soil survey, the applicant has provided us with a Class A high-intensity survey, which would satisfy, satisfy that condition of the ordinance. I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Craig. Discussion? All those in favor? Be three, three in favor. One absent and one not voting, or.
Abstaining.
Abstaining. All right, we ready to proceed to conditions of approval? I can read the standard conditions, and then we have the additional conditions that the applicant provide two reserve areas for each lot for septic, subsurface wastewater disposal. The applicant provide a, did you say you had the letter for the road name done?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and that you, applicant provide before construction commences a performance bond, um, covering the improvements to the property. Does anybody have any additional conditions?
Can we say as approved by the municipal officers?
Yes. As approved by the main municipal officers, they're the one that hold the bond.
So we have the, what we talked about tonight, um, we need to update the map, removing note nine.
Yes.
Showing the two reserved areas.
Yep, and note nine will be removed, but that's, we've already talked about, so that is a part of the conditions.
Can I clar- can I clarify the performance bond briefly? Um, is that meant to be, it has to be a performance bond, or just satisfy one of the performance guarantee requirements, like a letter of credit, irrevocable, irrevocable letter of credit?
Yeah, like three, there's three things they had to me.
I just wanna make sure the lettering gives them the flexibility to go after a irrevocable letter of credit.
I think a letter of credit is adequate, but I don't quote me on that exactly.
Yep.
So a letter of credit sufficient?
Selectmen have to approve it.
The selectmen would have to approve it.
All those options are options.
Okay.
Yeah, then the other one was the, the utilities loss of.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the note changing that the, um, individual slots will be served by underground services.
And that's note six.
Yep.
Yep.
And then note nine has been deleted.
So you'll provide new plans, updated plans?
Yes, we'll be able to provide those for the board to sign.
Okay. I'll read the standard conditions for approval. All elements and features of this plan and all representations made by the applicant concerning development and use of the property which appear in the record of the planning board proceedings are conditions of reapproval. No changes from the conditional approval is permitted unless an amended plan is first submitted to and approved by the planning board. Number two, that the applicant be in compliance with applicable provisions of Article thirteen. Number three, notify fire chief within seventy-two hours before a fire tank is installed. Number four, all outstanding bills paid before billing permit is issued, and number five, others. Six would be that two reserve areas of each lot are depicted for subsurface wastewater disposal on each lot. A performance bond agreeable to the town of Buxton, the board of selectmen and planning board is provided before construction begins. And anything else? I think we covered, um, that note, not, nope, nine is gonna be eliminated and.
Take care of underground.
And the note on the plan that the under, each individual lot will be served by underground utilities. Discussion? Okay. Based on previous discussions, we find this application to be in compliance with all applicable provisions of Article thirteen. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion?
No, second.
Second.
A motion by Craig, second by Scott for Article one. Discussion? All those in favor? Be three with one absent and one abstaining. Two, motion to approve the application with the conditions stated this evening and from previous meetings.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Motion by Craig, second by Scott. Discussion? All those in favor? Be three with one absent and one abstaining. Okay, you're fairly clear on what we're asking you?
We sure are. Yes, we sure are.
Good.
Thank you for your time tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Come on back. Next on the agenda is a discussion of the sidewalk for application for conditional use from Todd Libby, Libby School of Taekwondo, four hundred Narragansett Trail, map ten, lot one and two. Mr. Libby, can you just basically tell us what you're planning on doing?
Yes, um, opening a school for Taekwondo, um, gonna be having classes in, like I said, most of the time in the evening. Um, we discussed hours, you know, to be available through the day into the evening. Basically just renting a space, setting up a place to, to run the school. Um, I did get the, uh, email concerning the fire department and what they wanted the building to be sprinkled, and, um, I immediately sent that to Gabor, the landlord, and he's, he had somebody come by actually today. He's having a couple different people, so they're gonna get right on that and get it.
They're gonna sprinkle your unit?
No, I think, I think they have to do the whole thing, my understanding.
Obashan also?
I don't know about that. Just the, it looked like the building itself, the way you said that, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, those, those.
I don't know if Obashan was already. I, I have no idea.
I don't believe so, and I'm not quite certain it means the whole complex or that whole building.
Okay, well, so we'll need clarification on that, 'cause they do share a common wall, correct?
With the Obashan?
The buildings butt to each other.
Right, yeah, there's like a garage in between the two or something like that. Yeah, but definitely, yeah. So he's working on that, getting.
Okay.
Getting, um, estimates and everything to get that installed.
Okay.
So, and, um, like I said, as far as the rest of it goes, I think that.
Okay, and then can you just quickly, um, we talked about hours, can you refresh me?
Yeah, uh, we're looking at.
I might have it right here, I don't know.
I believe Monday through Friday.
Six to eight.
Well, we're talking all, you know, available all day.
Monday through Friday, six to eight?
Six AM to eight PM.
I, no, I think we had ten AM to eight PM?
Ten AM to eight PM, oh, yeah, that's fine, yep.
What about Saturday?
Uh, we, I believe we left that off, but, um, I, if we need to put that on there, is that something I, we can add?
Well, why don't we do Monday, ten to eight, Monday through Saturday, ten to eight? Is that agreeable?
Yes.
If you.
'Cause sometimes I hold, um, promotions or I, or if I'm doing like a certain test, like a black belt test or something like that, we'll do it on a sat, you know, we don't typically hold classes on the weekend, but, uh, black belt test can be like eight hours. So it's pretty intense, so.
So we're agreed, we'll do Monday through Saturday, ten to eight?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, um, we met there last Monday, um, Roger, you came early.
Yep.
But you, do you have any comments on the sidewalk?
No, I'm, my, my only, just in seeing the railing, I checked the railing, and that thing didn't wiggle, it was pretty sturdy. So that was, I mean, and the room was set up to be open and, um, yeah, it, I had no comments, it seemed.
Okay, any other comments?
I had a couple.
Yep.
Yeah, I had a couple, um, the railing looked very sturdy. I don't know what the spacing requirement is between the balusters.
Four inches.
Four inches, yeah.
Those run horizontally on that, that railing not vertically.
Mm-hmm.
I know that there's more than four inches between them. I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed.
At the building code stage, probably.
That's her deal.
Right, okay, and then having children in and out constantly, up and down the ramp, there's a concrete wall just before you start up the ramp on the left. The reveal on that wall is only, anyways, from twelve to twenty-four inches. I'm wondering if some kind of railing shouldn't be on top of that to protect somebody from being, or a child being extra curious, looking over the edge and potentially falling.
It's a, it's about a ten-foot drop.
Yeah, it's probably, it's a solid ten feet.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking on the, on, yeah. You go down past on the right?
Yeah.
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 And also, also there was, there seemed to be this, and these are basically your forte, but this is just things we noticed, was there's a concrete barrier and there's a gap in between where it drops off really steeply.
Drops really, really steep, right off the edge of the pavement.
So.
I don't know if that's something that needs to be, be addressed. Like Jerry said, I think that's more your.
Building code doesn't require guards on retaining walls.
Okay. You all set?
I'm good.
Scott?
Yeah, I'm all.
I, you guys pretty much covered everything I saw.
Otherwise, everything looked great.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
I think just, we looked at the parking, I think there's plenty of parking. The spot nearest the stairs is designated with handicap, um, on the pavement. I'll leave it up to you if you wanna put a sign in front of that. I'll leave that up to you and the landlord.
Yeah.
Um, and but, and then there is additional parking below, and the landlord, Gabor, stated that, um, he's gonna police Obashan about.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I know Ann, the supervisor, manager of, um, Obashan's, and I've talked to her about it, and she's, she has no problem.
You stated for the board that the majority of your people get dropped off.
Students, yes.
Students, and then the parents leave and then come back.
Yep.
And pick them up, but there might be a few that stay and wait.
Yeah. Yeah, typically, most, most parents like to take off and go do running errands and stuff like that and.
Go to Hanford or whatever, yeah. Okay.
Which works out perfect for that spot. That's why it's like, when I was picking, looking at the spot, it's like it's got all the things that really.
Before we go to, did I read this right? Do, or did I hear you right, that the, the building will need sprinklers?
That's what it says in this letter.
The letter, yeah.
Says it will require the building to be sprinkled, not the unit, the building.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly how that, but, um, I, like I said, I forwarded that email to Gabor, and he's, and he's contacted a couple of fu- uh, companies to come in and do what he's gotta do.
Yep, okay.
So wasn't that three units they apprised?
What's that?
Well, I wonder what triggered it.
This whole.
'Cause I don't think it's a renov- if it says it's a renovation, but I mean, that's hardly a renovation.
I didn't see any renovation that happened in there.
I haven't done none, I'm just, I just put mats on the floor and hung up.
Yeah.
It's, it's not my department, but yeah.
Was the eye doctor in the upstairs and downstairs?
No.
No, just upstairs.
Yeah.
Originally was a floral shop. Well, before that, was it, what was it before that? I can't remember.
Driving school?
Better Town Florist.
Better Town Florist.
And a driving school?
Excuse me?
And a driving school?
Can-do driving school, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's where I got my permit.
I wanna talk to that guy.
I understand the intent of the, the spec, but I was having, I've read this several times, and I'm like.
Yeah, I didn't make sense to me. I read it twice. I read it three times, and I still didn't know whether it was required or not.
What's that?
The, his letter stating that it needs to be sprinkled.
So I called him, and that's why my letter says it does need to be sprinkled.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
It does?
Yes.
It says, "Stay in line, Jerry."
What does my letter say from the ordinance?
I get it, but it's, it's.
Ten seventeen E-one, New Con.
But it's all about three units, and it's being, it was three units previously. Not adding anything, not doing any renovating.
Nope.
You see, occasional ding in the sheet rock maybe, but to be expected. They're not sharing a common egress.
Okay, well, we're gonna need some further clarification on that.
Much as sprinkled, that'd be great, but.
I think it falls under F.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, it's three more units.
Yep.
Whether that wasn't enforced earlier, I don't know.
Right, 'cause it was three units, the guy was just renting two himself.
Yes.
And, you know, could be this ordinance came out after it was already, so.
I think there is access to that downstairs, or that both units through those stairwell, that downstairs stairwell, it's kind of a stairwell, but it's more of a death trap.
The, the stairs go down, and there's a door on the right, and I believe that's blocked on the Obashan side.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there, can you regress those stairs to the outside?
I don't, I don't know.
You don't know, okay. That needs to be clarified too.
Yeah.
Okay, um, how does the board want to proceed?
Do you have a copy of this?
The, the letter from the fire?
Yeah.
Yes, right there.
And a copy from the code office as well?
Yeah.
So you saw the last paragraph where it says, uh, there's a use below that space you're applying to use that currently has electrical deficiencies.
Yes, uh, that was downstairs, the, um, the tenant Max, he apparently had got, uh, in my e- I got an email from Gabor saying that Max had notified him afterwards and said that he had an electrician come in to fix it that day.
Okay.
So supposedly that's already taken care of.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah.
Before we proceed too, too far.
Oh, yes, that's why I immediately gave all that stuff to Gabor to, you know, to look at and take care of.
Yep. Um, I think.
Good to go?
For a public hearing?
I think so.
And the outstanding thing would be the sprinkler, right, if you got that or not?
Um, input from town staff on public hearings, do you have any issues? No. I mean, we, we could schedule a public hearing and make a conditional approval that the building is sprinkled and passed by the fire chief, but that might be three or four months from now, I don't know.
Hoping not.
Okay, but.
It's.
You're aware this is kind of out of our hands.
It won't be three or four months. He, he'll be able to answer that question with a phone call.
Who?
The fire chief?
I know, but I'm talking about installation.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, installation.
Could take a while.
Could take a while.
Right.
I, I'm pretty sure, uh, state, a licensed designer has to design a plan, submit it to the state, the state has to approve it, then has to be, and correct me if I'm misspeaking, the state has to approve it. It's gotta be installed and then inspected by the town. So that process might take a little while.
Right now, it gets approved by the town, doesn't it, sprinkler?
And the state.
Change if.
State Fire Marshal.
State Fire Marshal also requires a permit.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, are you okay with proceeding with the, the public hearing?
I am for this. I, I, I did wanna say later on, I commented that I think some of our public hearings were getting a little ahead of ourselves. We started getting a lot of conditional uses.
Yeah.
But this, this is something that, I'm okay with this, 'cause this is just one conditional use that came out last minute.
Next meeting is May twenty-seventh?
Sick, uh.
It's the day after.
Twenty-seventh.
Yes, Tuesday, right?
That Tuesday, so. So someone wanna make a motion? To set up a public hearing?
Uh, make a motion to set up a public hearing for Todd Libby, Libby School of Taekwondo, four hundred Narragansett Trail, map ten lots one and two for May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Set at seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Yep, I have a motion by Craig. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Second by Roger?
Yep.
Discussion? Okay, we're gonna set a public hearing for Monday, May twenty-seventh, for Todd Libby, Libby School of Taekwondo, Tuesday, excuse me, May twenty-seventh, four hundred Narragansett Trail, map ten lot one point two. All those in favor? Be four with one absent, okay?
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is CEO report.
Um, the only thing I have is to point out a letter that went out the end of last week. I don't.
I don't want to name people's names or addresses, but it's something that's been before the board, and they're exceeding the conditional use approval, so I'm trying to bring them back into...
Have you had any response from them?
No.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
So you may have to go the next step?
Yes.
So you may have to go the next step?
Yep.
Approval of minutes for April 28.
I'm okay with the minutes as written.
Me, too.
I make a motion to accept as written for April 28, 2025.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Be four with one absent. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of bills. Mr. Treasurer?
I have one for tonight's public hearing in the amount of $46.30. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
I have a motion by Scott, second by Craig to approve the payment of $46.30. Scott, and all those in favor? Be four with one absent. Communications, June 9th meeting is going to have to be moved to the small conference room because they're going to be setting up here for voting. So everybody make a note that on the 9th, we will meet on the other end of the building, because this building is going to be used for...
Tied up.
Tied up. We had questions from David Gray on Gray's contracting regarding the relocation of a driveway that was supposed to be on lot 3, now is going to traverse lot 2, and also the same lot that the barn is on. How does the board... What does the board like from the applicant?
So his question was, can he incorporate that in with his barn application for the elderly housing?
I think it should go on the original subdivision. He separated these lots out to two different subdivisions. I think that should be on the original subdivision.
I agree.